All right, we will call to order the planning and zoning commission. Uh Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Uh Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Here.
Ms. Langallis?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
And Mr. Bryce?
Here.
You have a corner.
Wonderful, and I believe everyone is seated this evening. Um. One thing to note before we get started is one of our applications, um one oh one dash two oh one merit seven uh is not on uh not appearing tonight. Is that right, Brian? We're continuing until or they've asked for a extension until the January meeting, right?
Right, yeah. So January seventh, we'll have that meeting on your agenda, for that item on your agenda.
Great, thank you. Uh so our uh first hearing is twenty twenty five dash seven seven uh subdivision, N I E Richards LLC, two ten Richards Avenue, proposed three lot subdivision, public hearing, report and recommended action. Uh for anyone from the public who's wishing to speak on this tonight, uh you'll have an opportunity to in a little bit. First, the applicant is going to uh present their application. We'll have a chance to ask some questions. We'll then turn it over to the public for comment, and then afterwards, the applicant will have a chance to respond. Uh with that, who is representing two ten Richards Ave?
Uh I am representing two ten Richards Avenue at Alicy here. Uh I'm the developer on the project.
Um so do you mind giving us a presentation of the application?
Yeah, definitely. Uh I didn't prepare a formal um presentation. I just figured we'd talk about it, but uh two ten Richards Avenue is currently um it's uh two vacant lots right now. And our idea, what we'd like to do is uh subdivide it into three single family uh lots uh there. Um build a um a cul-de-sac to access the new lots. And uh you know, just make it a nice place to live. Uh you know, you're you're picturesque, you know, northern New England uh living. Uh you know, we'll have uh maybe uh three nice homes there around twenty five hundred to three thousand square feet. Um and I think it would be a very nice addition to the neighborhood. Um you know, it would definitely fit the character of the neighborhood that's already there. Um and the lot has, I think it'd actually be a great idea because I know from the previous owner, the lot has stood vacant for some time, and there was also some blight issues. So I know the town would be very happy to see this uh developed um and put to good use. Um also in the meeting is uh my civil engineer, oh uh Wayne of Fairfield County Engineering, who has plenty of experience with um, you know, doing work here in Norwalk. And he can get into the particulars of the uh of the engineering of the site and, you know, all the important things as far as uh, you know, stormwater management and um all those, all those great things. Uh well, yes, uh I'm open to any questions.
Oh, one of the questions I have maybe before we take a look at the uh the site plan and dive into that is um around the comments that uh came in from DPW. Um have you or uh Mr. Devanzo had a a chance to uh take a look at that, those comments and address them?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh Wayne, if you're available, maybe you can speak on those.
Yes, certainly. Uh Wayne Devanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. Uh yes, we are in the process of addressing the comments from DPW and TMP. Uh they're they're all mostly addressed. We uh. The major one really, or the most time-consuming one at least, is uh the requirement to mitigate the runoff from the road, from the proposed new roadway itself. Uh then we do have to do more soil testing out there, which is going to be happening hopefully, hopefully this Friday. So uh once that's done, we'll have uh. We'll be able to finally pull that all together and uh, you know, and address the your, you submit a revised plan and that address all the comments.
Okay, in it, in the interest of time, um are you open to continuing this until our our first January meeting? That way we can see the the revised plan and we don't have to hear the presentation tonight and then come back in January to hear the modifications, then take an action?
Yeah, I I think that would make sense per personally. I think that would uh make the most sense.
Okay, yeah, want to be cautious of everyone's time. Um so if if that works for you all, um happy to ask for such a motion. Unless anyone has any comments before.
Yeah, I'll move to continue. Yeah.
Okay. Harvey moved. Lou, was that a second?
Yeah.
Great.
And uh so this will be a motion to continue to January seventh, twenty twenty six uh six P M.
Correct.
All right, I'll do a roll call. Uh Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yep.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right, that's unanimous for continuation.
Uh I I do have one quick question. I drove by the site. Um I didn't, I didn't walk by because of yesterday was raining pretty heavily. Um and I didn't notice uh a sign out front uh regarding the public hearing.
So technically subdivision regulations don't have the requirement for the sign posting?
Falls under planning, doesn't it? Not zoning.
Right.
Okay.
So we we will at some point update the subdivision regulations, in which case we'll we'll add the posting of a sign, I'm sure.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, uh thank you, Mr. Uh E C and uh I lost the name. Uh there we go. Devanzo for uh your presentation tonight. We look forward to seeing you in January.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um so next, uh we are moving to application twenty twenty five dash seven six SPR one hundred Norwalk LLC, propose uh outdoor seasonal sales area and outdoor storage of products, which includes restriping parking spaces, report and recommended action. Uh who is representing uh one hundred uh Norwalk LLC?
Uh you have me, Isaiah Brown from Lang and Engineering.
Great. Um Ms. Brown, do you mind uh giving us a presentation on the application?
Yeah, sure. I can share my screen.
Please.
Ready?
There we go.
Yep.
All right, you guys got it?
Yes.
Great. Um so I just introduced myself, uh Isaiah Brown, professional civil engineer with Lang and Engineering, representing uh Lowe's uh here in Norwalk. So um I'll keep this brief, but essentially what we're trying to do here on the property is dedicate some outdoor storage and outdoor um seasonal sales area uh in uh to replace some existing parking on site. Um it kind of memorializes what they're already trying to do here. Um so I'll just give you a brief rundown. Um so uh really, the big request or the big change would be to memorialize on the plans a dedicated seasonal storage uh or seasonal sales area. This is for um, you know, your mulch pickup and and stuff like that. So essentially uh people go into the store, order a bunch of mulch or other items, and they drive into this area. It's preloaded by a Lowe's employee, and then uh you you leave. Um. In addition to that, they also wanted to dedicate some areas on site for just outdoor storage of materials such as lumber, um mulch, concrete, other air, other uh goods that are set on pallets. So we've uh boxed out some areas here where there won't be any parking anymore. It'll just be uh outdoor storage areas. Uh in addition to that, we're proposing um just some restriping of the parking lot. So uh it would be dedicating some areas for curbside pickup. Um typical to, you know, any other Lowe's store, and then some areas for trailer, you know, pro-trailer parking, you know, if you wanted to rent a trailer or some other large vehicle. Um so basically, the application is that it um. And in this application, we do lose parking, but compared to the new parking requirements outlined by the updated zoning regs, we have a net. Um we still have a surplus of eighty nine parking spaces on site. So uh I'll leave it at that, open to questions. Um but but that's essentially what we're uh looking to do here.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? One question I have for you is uh regarding the outdoor storage. Um um for materials like like mulch, for example, um are those contained in a manner where uh they won't leak or or leach into the um parking lot or the drainage systems?
Uh yeah, yeah, they are. So they're uh basically stacked in their bags, and then around those, they're kind of wrapped in a big uh. I don't know if it's a Saran wrap, but plastic wrap to kind of tightly keep them together. Um and then I believe they also keep them undercover uh as well. So um yeah.
Okay, so this won't be piles of mulch will be?
No, no, it won't be loose piles of mulch. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions for Mr. Brown? Brian, do you have anything you want to add in here for?
Nope. Uh Michelle had issued a uh staff memo with the draft resolution, which I think covers covers all of our um information.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion for this application?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is that to approve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Oh, uh thanks, Diana. I saw I saw your hand go up. Uh Brian, do you mind pulling up the uh resolution?
Sure.
Are there any comments or modifications to the resolution? All right, hearing none. Brian, do you mind calling the roll for this?
Sure. Uh Mr. Schulman? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor? Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Right.
Great, that's unanimous. Uh thank you for your presentation, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
Have a great evening.
Do.
Our next application is twenty twenty five dash eight two uh coastal site plan review. Uh Teresa and Bull Duncan, six Golden Court, raise an existing single-family residence to be FEMA compliant, construct a a new entry with stairs, enclose a covered parking area, and reconstruct a rear deck. Report and recommended action. Uh who is representing uh six Golden Court this evening?
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Heinz. Uh do you mind giving us a presentation on this application?
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Uh thank you, guys, for your time. Uh for the record, Vincent Heinz, uh licensed engineer with Redness and Mead having offices in Stanford and Wilton. Our office has provided the the site engineering for the project here in Six Golden Court. Uh and tonight I'm joined by uh Azure of Race Coastal Engineering and Howard of H K Two Architects. Uh in in the event that you want to hear any uh presentation material from them. I'll do a quick overview here of my screen. So you should see this uh Google aerial. Uh just we're we're in the Bell Island section of Norwalk. Uh over here, six Golden Court in the C D one S zoning district bound by the, you know, Long Island Sound, the common passway of six Golden Court uh and and other residentially developed properties in in the neighborhood. Um. And then I'll switch to here. Can you see my screen and are you looking at a?
Yes.
Site plan now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So probably better for this one. Existing conditions that the house uh based on its elevation and location is entirely within the V E uh fifteen elevation fifteen flood zone. So the proposal here is to raise the home to meet the B F E requirements of the city uh zoning regulations. So a- as the site is in the V E zone, velocity zone, that requires us getting the finished first floor duck work, associated joist work set at the B F E plus two feet. So in this case, we're looking to raise the elevation of the house, the first floor to elevation eighteen point eight to accommodate that. Um just as a note, under existing conditions, there is a an external on-ground A C unit that similarly to to get that into the flood compliance will be raised up to uh kind of a rooftop alcove uh. Like I said, to meet the requirements of the B F E plus two. Worth noting, before I get too far uh on the site, we did go before the zoning board of appeals, and they granted variances for the height related to this work at their October sixteenth meeting. Uh and we've gone before the harbor management commission, and they found the plan to be consistent with the harbor management plan of the city at their November nineteenth meeting. And we received DPW's uh conditions of typical conditions of approval earlier today uh and provided such to staff via email. So I think with that, existing conditions is is primarily um impervious. There's there's very little pervious lawn type areas here. The site is just just over thirty eight hundred square feet in size, and like I just said, it it's ninety five percent impervious coverage, inclusive of buildings, driveway, walkways, patio areas, and the like. Uh no formal stormwater management system on site, and one hundred percent of the site, as you can imagine, uh is tributary from a stormwater runoff standpoint to the Long Island Sound uh via either a series of weep holes out on the Golden Court passway or or through any openings in the on the rear uh seawall. So then, so this is just a series of the the existing floor plans that i- if if needed, like I said, Howard can get into any details there. But going to the proposed layout, the house, as I said, is being raised first floor to elevation eighteen point eight. And to accommodate that, we need more risers to get to that first floor door. So they're reconfiguring the stairs kind of in the front side of the house and reconfiguring the the deck space and stairs down to the rear patio, which will the patio itself will still remain in the flood zone. Uh in doing that, in doing so, that gives us the op- opportunity to increase the pervious areas. Um so we're decreasing the impervious coverage by about four hundred square feet. While this alone has a positive impact on stormwater management and water quality, uh some additional groundwater recharge is going to occur via these pervious areas. Um and we'll, we're still going to propose some some crushed stone reservoirs underneath uh of the stairways to uh gain even more flexibility from a stormwater runoff standpoint. So with that, uh we're expecting peak runoff rates and volumes uh to be reduced up to and including the hundred-year storm as DPW requires with the drainage manual. I think it a- also important to say that a- all work being proposed is uh landward of the existing seawall, so we're not going into the deep territory of uh any permitting currently. Uh and with that, I'd open it up to questions, or if you'd like any further presentation from Azure or Howard, uh happy to have them chime in.
Is um the patio uh area pervious?
No, the the patio area itself i- is is impervious. Uh we are gaining, so the under existing conditions, if I scroll back here, the patio extends basically property line to property line, north to south. So with the addition of the stairs down, we're actually gaining some pervious area o- on the backside here. So we are decreasing coverage on that side of the house, but the remainder is primarily staying the same.
Oh, Mr. Heinz, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Um. I guess continuing on with Mr. Schulman's, um. How is it that you are permitted so little pervious coverage? I understand the lot is very small, and there's a driveway on one side that accesses the house uh further to the south. Um. And is the, so I'm sorry, answer the first question if you can.
Um yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Part of the variance? I'm not sure.
No, so so Brian could probably speak to this as well, but uh this is an existing condition non-conformity that with this application, we're we're bettering that condition.
Mm-hmm.
So there was no variance required to better the condition from existing conditions.
So it's sort of grandfathered in, in essence?
Correct.
Okay, and um at the top, a sort of right side of your diagram, yes, is that a staircase down to the water?
That's an existing set of stairs that connects the patio out out to the water, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then um in the elevation, I know that uh you all are going to eighteen point eight. FEMA is fifteen, and the city wants um two feet beyond that, two additional feet, so that would be seventeen. So what is the um necessity to go to eighteen point eight?
So Vince, I can speak to that. I'm Howard Kelly. I'm the architect, um H K Two Architects here in Norwalk. Um the seventeen number that you're referencing, that the fifteen feet plus two is to the bottom. That's called freeboard, so it's to the bottom of any structural elements. So our structure has to be above that point, and we have floor joists, and then we're supporting them with um thin steel beams essentially to to raise the house. So that was the minimum possible that we could get it up to um and comply with the seventeen feet. And so when we presented it to um the Z B A, that's how we we walked through it and explained that that was the minimum minimum raise we could do.
And and Howard, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's related to the fact that we're in the velocity zone as opposed to the more common A E zone, right? With respect?
Correct. It's one of the, it's unfortunately for the owners, one of the few houses in the On Bell Island that is fully in the V E zone. It has no part in the A E zone. So it's more akin to Fairfield Beach, where the houses have to be truly raised um versus the A E zone.
Mr. Kelly, just say that back to you, just so I understand. Um so the elevation of the base of the the joists and other like um supportive materials are at the seventeen-foot elevation, but the the measure for the first story is at that eighteen point three. Is that right?
Eighteen point eight, exactly.
Thank you, yes.
That one point eight feet is essentially the joists and the beams that support the joists.
Thank you.
So you, so you couldn't do it at seventeen, in other words, because then you would just have, you know, one inch of floorboards and no joists.
Right, right.
Those those joists are not allowed to be below seventeen?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I I, if the patio didn't exist before, I would be in favor of it being pervious, but if it already exists, then it already exists.
Yeah, I can I can go back to the aerial too, that probably shows the green space better. Um so there, at the property boundary, there's a a handful of shrubs and herbividy type tree just between the properties. Um but the rear is fully patio area currently, and there's only slight pervious areas up here in the front yard.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Are there any other questions for Mr. Heinz or Mr. Kelly? All right. Is there a motion for this application?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Harvey. Uh is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Darius. Uh Brian, do you mind pulling up the uh resolution? Any questions or discussion or modification on this uh resolution?
Um Chapin, if I could just make a comment?
Please.
Thank you. I I'd just like to say, you know, I understand that the lift has to happen, and this is a pre-existing structure. Uh so they sort of have what they have. Um but that at forty-one feet, it's above sort of the recommended thirty-eight foot height of a single-family dwelling.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other comments before we go to a vote? Okay, hearing none. Brian, do you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Uh Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
All right, unanimous.
Great. Thank you for the uh presentation tonight.
Thank you all. Happy holidays if we don't see you before then.
You as well. All right, our next application is uh moved to January. Uh so we will move on to the next item, which is uh acceptance of the minutes. Uh are there any modifications to the minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Lou. Uh see, Tammy seconded. Uh we'll do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? All right, uh any abstentions? And any against? Okay, just two abstentions. Okay, great. So that carries. Um comments of staff. Brian, do you have any comments for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay, any comments of commissioners?
I have a comment.
Well, go ahead.
Um, or maybe more of a question. Um we are, uh lease-up has already started for Mill Pond. Um and um I was wondering if we could get an update on the status of the city, city-state work on um, gosh, I'm losing my mind. You know, the twenty-five K that developers set aside for us to possibly use some of the city land for public access if there was deep approval. Like, where are we at with that?
I will follow up with Steve. I know it's still being worked on, as far as I know, but Steve would know better than I would. He's been the kind of the keeper of keeping track of that.
Okay. Thanks.
Nick, did you have a comment?
I was gonna say, may all future meetings be this uh efficient.
We we were dealt a good hand today.
I I have another call. I'm sorry.
Please.
Trying to ruin the efficiency. Um I I wanted to share that I took um I took a tour of the Mill Pond building um uh with the property manager, and it's it's really beautiful. It's coming along really nicely. Um but we went over some of the um some of the costs for affordable. Uh there 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 are a number of non-optional building costs. I don't know if anybody has rented in new buildings recently, but this is pretty standard that they require, you know, a seventy-five-dollar key fub fee, a one hundred dollar application fee, and they have so many required fees that it gets quite high. Um not all of them are required at at other buildings. Um. And I I have the list somewhere, but like uh it's a lot. It adds up to a lot, and because the affordable units sort of have to be provided the same amenities as everybody else, um it means or they're interpreting it as they can't um give the affordable units a break on those. For example, they build, you know, an onsite gym and seating area and meeting rooms and an indoor and an outdoor lounge and all of those sort of nice amenities. But then there's a charge for them, and you can't live in the building with. But then there's a charge for them and you can't live in the building without paying that charge for them. Um, and it was an issue that I wanted to bring up and start thinking about. Um, also, um, I heard, uh, from the property manager, um, I know we've done a lot of, you know, we do parking studies and Nick knows this better than anybody with desegregate. Um, uh, that we don't always need so much parking. Um, but just from their firsthand experience, the, the, the people who are actually going to be operating the building, when they saw how little parking there was on this site, they saw a problem. Um, and immediately thought that it was underparked and that they were going to need to secure other parking somehow. And they're looking into that and I'm sure, um, if they can't secure other parking or if the other parking isn't enough, that's going to be more street parking in the neighborhood, which of course is, is allowed, but is not the point. The point of us reducing parking requirements was not to flood the streets with extra cars. It's because we think most parking requirements are excessive, um, and could be lower and people use cars less and we want to support that, blah, blah, blah. Um, so I wanted to share that, that, that we know there's difference between the people who do the development and the people who then operate the development or the people that get it sold to, um, and, um, they saw that as an issue right away. So I feel like there might have been something else that I wanted to share. I don't remember what it was, but it, it really is looking quite nice. I encourage anybody to take a tour. Um, and see how they did it. It's really ingenious and gorgeous and I think it'll be lovely. Um, but, but, but I have some concerns that I wanted to share.
Thank you. On the, uh, common charges, Brian, I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that we can address in the regs, but may, maybe we can figure out where, where that should be addressed and see how to, how to achieve that. Any other comments this evening?
Yeah.
Welcome, J J. All right, go ahead, Tammy.
Oh, Bryce, um, Chapin, sorry. Um, I just, I've driven by, um, the new building on West and Maple, whose name is escaping me right at the moment. Um, and it's, you know, a, approaching completion and the units that have direct street access, whether it's on Maple or West Avenue, are these very, um, I would call industrial metal doors. And I'm just wondering if anybody else has noticed those and if that's what they thought they were going to look like, because I believe those are the private entrance to those units. And to me, they look sort of like fire escape doors or something that is not at all residential or welcoming. And, you know, I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention because hey, it's only six thirty five and um, you know, I don't know that we can do anything about it, but I wonder if anybody else had noticed it. It's such a big building and, you know, most of the materials are pretty.
Not alone in.
You're, you're talking about the doors along West Avenue?
Yeah.
Like the mini, yeah, I noticed that, the mini townhouses that.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I imagine we can look back at the, or Brian, if, we don't have to do it right now, but can look at, we can look at the plans that they submitted, right? And I don't know if door material is something that, but.
Maybe, and maybe they're just temporary for a while. They are building them or maybe I'm mistaken and people actually enter from the inside and that is their back door fire escape, if you will. I don't know. So any clarification that anybody maybe on staff could give us if that's what we approved, um, it's ugly.
I agree with Tammy, it's ugly.
What about?
Darius, I couldn't hear what you said, sorry.
There's a portion of the building that's a bit, uh, that's orange and, uh, has a more waxy aesthetic as well that if you really wanted to nitpick, but.
Yeah.
Chugging along.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think all those elements are, are ones that would be in that, uh, site plan. So that's something we can go reference. Uh, I don't, did we have an architectural, we did have an architectural review for that, right? So we should have, uh, some of those documents as well. Any other comments tonight? Great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, move.
Thank you, Darius. Uh, thank you, Tammy, for seconding, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Happy holidays, everyone.
You too.
Rest of your year.
Holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
In January, yeah.